Quite some time. They are intense right here. They want to give you a PowerPoint presentation in regards to the Public Improvement Project, construction of cell 3A and closure of phase 1 and 2. Landfill is a very valuable service we provide to the community and this environment. This specific project has been a rather challenging project to this point because of this, I believe it's important that we maintain awareness about this community service. This awareness I'm referring to is based on past efforts assisted by Houston and leading up to substantial completion of this project and also potentially looming regulations on the state's horizon. So at this time, I'd just like to turn it over to Bart Schultz or Dennis from Houston Engineering.
Thank you, Brian.
As Brian said, my name is Bart Schultz. I've been involved with this landfill since the mid 90s. So I was involved with it when we were still filling the ash site and had just abandoned the old MSW landfill. So a lot of history at this site and the transition from the old site when SW 184 into the 572, which is what the new site is when we first permitted phase 1 and 2, which was what we actually were abandoning as part of this project. So I'm going to start out and Dennis here is the project manager and actually the engineer for the permit renewal that we just went through and the construction that we were almost through. So with that, we have a PowerPoint and really I want to make this conversation, so feel free to ask questions as they come up and we got a couple things here we're going to let you look at and kind of explain to you what we ran into when we were out there on the phase 3A area. So this is what we're talking about right now is the existing operations. The closure part is at phase 1 and 2, which has been operating for a little over 10 years now. And then phase 3A, I guess that might point who does that, doesn't it? So phase 3A, which is what we constructed, is this section right here and then the landfill office is right there, just to give you some perspective. So just some milestone dates and I know you all were here when we went through this, but our initial submittal to the PCA for this permit happened in 2014, 180 days before the permit was due. They didn't get to it the first year and we were almost at expiration before they actually started to look at it. July 1st was a significant date. We had a meeting with them after they had reviewed our permit out at the landfill and the PCA came out and basically changed the rules a little. Our Class 1 landfills were governed under a guidance document that was developed in 2005. So our permit application and such was put together in that context. Well, since that time, the issues with other landfills within the state with monitoring around that has caused them to question even the Class 1 landfills, which is basically fairly clean demo that we have. So that's why we had no monitor, we didn't require any monitoring or liners with the Class 1 landfill. So then as you see, and I'm not going to go through all the dates, but from that point on, we basically, after our meeting with the PCA, we had another meeting, Dennis and I had another meeting down in St. Paul with them about your facility and explaining what our design was and we met with the engineers and the hydro's at that time. And they came back with us basically having to resubmit the permit. And then after that, we went through a whole review process again and got to the point where we actually got a permit and we could construct the facility. So what we're going to go through now is really after getting the permit from the facility, meaning we then had to put in a liner as one of the conditions and we had to have a leachate collection system as part of the engineering on the class 1 landfill. So I'm going to let Dennis explain some of the actual features that we had to build into this that were not in the original design under the original permit that we submitted, yes?
Question, were we the first one to go through this new permitting?
Unfortunately, we were.
Okay.
We were the pioneers on this one. We were the first one. What was unique about our site is we had clay. You know, a lot of people say a landfill with clay, that's really a good thing and it is a good thing, but if we would have been in a sand environment, it would have been a different, it would have been a different track that we would have taken at this point.
The uniqueness of your site is that when you look at the inventory of the CND landfills in the state, there's only a handful of them that are in clay. Now you guys are a little different. You have a very unique site. You have sand on one side. Phase 1 and 2 is entirely in sand. You guys don't manage any leachate. It just, it drains into the, from beneath the landfill. There is some, you know, limited monitoring that you do, but yeah, it is, it is a bit unprecedented that we went the route to go with a liner. You guys had a choice during the permitting process to go, do you want to install a liner? And if you look in the continuum up here from the upper right to the lower left, you know, we have a liner section up there. We're trying to show clay and there's sand. And then we have our leachate collection trench, which is this guy right here. It's a, you know, rock encased in something and then we, in geotextile. And we have our pump that's down there. And these are all new things that you guys don't have on phase 1 and 2. And finally, we get to a point where we're pulling, you know, leachate out. So back to that decision, you could have went two routes. We could have went and did what phase 1 and 2 is, but you would have been wrapped into a whole lot of water quality monitoring. We would have placed a lot of wells around and you would have tracked, if there was some type of environmental, you know, aplume, something like that, you would have to track and monitor that. So, you know, there's really two ways and this was, we chose the liner way. When you talk about, you know, Bart mentioned the guidance, there was no, there's no rule. They came to you and us and said, well, you know, we have questions about the, how you will manage leachate in this liner section. They gave us a performance set. We came up with this. There is nothing in Minnesota rule said, you know, it'll be one foot, it'll be compacted. So we proposed eight inches in place. We figured that was enough that we could, you know, scarify with a disc and we could give them some understanding that we were getting compaction and, you know, really one of their primary concerns, and we'll touch base on a little later, is this being a glacial till environment, you know, can you give us certainties that this is all going to be 100% clay, every bit of it and you won't have any sand? So we figured if we did the in-place, an in-place disking process, and I understand I'm getting in the weeds, but we would, we would be able to tell them, yes, we have a complete liner that's intact, that has integrity and it will hold leachate and we can pump it.
The one thing that, the one concept we'll talk about a little later, but just keep in mind is subgrade correction. One of the things we talked about when doing the eight inches and why they approved us to just scarify eight inches and recompact in place materials because we said we would do subgrade correction. So Dennis will get into that a little more as we get into the slides.
So if you can wrap your arms around, this is being phase 3A landfill office up here. And we'll scroll through some pictures, but the bulk of them are, you know, of phase 3A here. This is the cell. We refer to these grades. Anything within this box as the landfill base grades. This is your permitted boundary. So right now, you guys' current permit is you are permitted for footprint over this big box, which we're assuming each one of these boxes is a five-year cell. So you have 15 years of footprint and 10 years of capacity. You have a 10-year permit. We'll be, you'll be back at this, was it 2013 when the permit was or 2015? So back in 2025. So I'm going to get into just the, I guess the, this was a challenging project. If anything, if we said it any other way, we wouldn't be telling you the full truth. So we're looking at, this is day one. We're doing topsoil removal. We are, we're going to move a few thousand yards of material and as you look at in the upper right-hand side, we immediately discovered muck. This was unanticipated. We didn't think that we would find this material, especially on day one. This area had been farmed in the past. There had been, you know, operations in here that would lead you to believe that this is, this is not here. We have borings and we'll show the slide a little later that cover large extents of the expansion area that don't tell us this is here. So in terms of, you know, struggle and hardship, this was right off the bat, we're looking at a change order to how do we, how do we manage these materials? In terms of the management, we were able to utilize a significant amount of materials on site. Granted, this is beneath, you know, your access road. So these muck materials are in this neighborhood right here. So we had to remove them so that you'd have a stable foundation for your road and that we wouldn't have, you know, we'd have a stable liner section that we could place material atop. This whole process started our, I guess I'd say woes with the discovery of water within the excavation. So you can see here in the photo, you know, the extents of the muck extended into the base grades of the cell. This is within the confines of our, of our box. You can see that there is standing water in the excavation. Right now, the crew is working on, they're backing scrapers in and top-loading scrapers. It's pretty unproductive work, you know, scraper usually loads itself. So the fact they had to get in here with another piece of equipment to load it is, you know, speaks to the challenges of the project. So the blue is the extent of the muck as it reached its way into the cell. So as Bart mentioned, and we have a liner section. We said we're going to do eight inches compacted in place. This entire blue box, we can't certify to the PCA that eight inches, that eight inches doesn't exist. The eight inches is muck. So we have to take it out and that subgrade correction is two feet in place. So we couldn't scarify it at eight. We take it out and we put two feet compacted in. Initially, this is the extent of that box and the subgrade correction. So there we, we had put in the contract, we had known that this being a glacial till environment, there may be some sand, there may be some unsuitable material. We took a guess that 25% of the liner area would contribute to that subgrade correction. We're May 25th. There's this picture. I want to say I go back and what was the date on that? May 1. So we're, you know, a month into this thing and, you know, we're already probably tripled what we had thought on that with the muck excavation and the subgrade correction. So challenges to start with. Our water woes continued. You are looking at a plan sheet here and there's a lot of text on here, but the color code, if you can follow with the colors, relates back to the previous map. The blue is the extent of the muck inside the cell. This line right here is our, this is our base grade. You can see it's all over our sump area, which for this facility is critical. You go back to this guy, you have, these are three cells. There will be three, in the future, you have a facility that's, we have somewhere in the neighborhood of 75 years of life. You have three more cells that'll go here, three more here. It's more or less a pie shape, you know, 94 runs along the south and west here. So this area is the primary drainage. This is the primary sump for the entire facility. All leachate flows that we, that we generate from all these future cells run down here. This is the low point of the facility. So this is, this is Grand Central Station in terms of our leachate collection. It's ultra-critical that we get this right and that we have a really good liner at this area. So we nailed it in terms of the muck at the location of the sump. So here we're looking at, back to that cross-section. So this is a removal, that's a removal. You can see here our water woes and I understand the pictures go back and forth. Here we're the 15th, but the water is not going away. We're in a fairly dry summer for the most part. I know you guys are one of our inspection staff up here. I don't know how many times you're like, you guys should be getting a lot of rain up there. Literally went around the site. So we were blessed through the summer months to not have that, but notwithstanding, we still had a lot of water that was making its way into the excavation. With this in hand, you know, we had anticipated some water, but this was, this was a significant amount. We knew that we needed to have the support of the PCA to, so that we could still work within the confines of our permit and still certify to them that we had a liner that would serve its function, it would serve its purpose. So we brought them in. You can see here, here we're at conditions, we're June 1. This is terrible conditions to place a liner in. You imagine trying to get material compaction. It's completely saturated. Even with the subgrade correction, what do you do with all this water? So working jointly with them, we developed an underdrain system. So I guess my slides all, we'll eventually get to the underdrain system, but we're going to talk right now, we're going to talk a little bit about the hydro geo characteristics at the site. And sort of some of you are sitting there, well, how did you not know that you would encounter this? Where did all, where did this question mark come from? How come you guys, day one, you're finding this stuff? So we're going to go back and we're going to revisit from the previous permit. So this area, as Bart mentioned in his intro, this is, this expansion has been permitted before. Back in 2008, there was a permit that was put forth that you would expand to this area and just so happens in that permit, granted you were, they didn't, the PCA didn't, had a different understanding of the guidance, maybe a different interpretation of it. Leachate collection was not a component of it. So the expansion at that time was down here. Your first cell, if you would have developed back in 2008, 2009, would have been down here. So as part of that process, as part of that expansion, 10 years ago, there was a groundwater investigation. So you can see here, all of these points, all of these little dots, these are all borings. This was an exhaustive process. I can't remember the actual number of borings that are here, but there's enough borings to identify a groundwater table. You can see in a cross-section here, this is infamous JJ prime, which is along here. So we're looking at a cross-section through borings in here. You can see that groundwater is at 1180. This box, this is our sump. So all those pictures that I showed you before, we had water. That's up here. We're at about 1220. 1225 is the bottom of our sump. So you look at the cross-section of the previous information ahead, you'd say, what are you guys coming across here? This is all CL. It's all clay. It's clay down to, you have 50, 60 feet of This is the exact same information that was provided to the PCA back in 2008. It's just a different map, but it shows, you know, similar groundwater contours and, you know, going into this, we didn't redo that effort. There was a significant effort that was done in 2008 and there was a joint understanding at the PCA of, you know, where's the water in this site? The, you know, the hydro analysis that we did and that the PCA, you know, accepted, didn't really change at all. So...
So if you go back to the one, the slide before that, Dennis. So what you have here really, and you have an upper aquifer, which is represented in this sand here, and you have a lower aquifer way down here. And these two, these two aquifers actually connect back over here. So if you remember, we have our existing site up here. And so that lower aquifer, the general groundwater flow is to the northwest and that those two aquifers actually join up somewhere above by the property line, the far western property line. So what Dennis has is, is you're thinking, where did all that water come from? When we excavated and you go, what's that cross-section? Oops, sorry. So the base of our liner, subbase of our liner is way up here. Where's that all that water coming from?
So, yeah, I guess I wanted, you know, something you guys could put your hands on, but this right here, you can see we have clay, clay and sand. I had to get the clay kind of wet to get into a tube, so your clay isn't that wet. But this is an obvious sand scene. This thing is represented here. We're representing this section, obvious sand, and that's this guy. Now what we found with this, this water that's in the excavation is that our initial analysis didn't identify a sand stringer. You know, this being, this is not consistent clay throughout. There are small little areas of sand that may hold trapped water and that's what this one is to represent. This is actually what you may see out there. This may be what we're looking at. It is literally that small. So if you could take that one exaggerated, that sand section should be, if you look at the 1220 to...
Could be this one here.
It could be that whole deal. You could have 60 feet of it. What we found within the cell is that the sand stringers, they literally look like this. If you got down, and I didn't put a picture of it, but if you got down when the contractor excavated and you peeled that back, there would be clay and then a little bit of gritty sand and clay beneath it, but it was, there was water inside of it. That's how the bigger it is. Our previous, you know, boring investigation program didn't catch that. It's so minute, it's so small that it's really beyond the influence that you would get in a typical boring program. The drill rig would have just bored right through it. You know, you're, you're looking at characterizing that column as you drill down and the column is so small that it's, you'd just fly right by it. So we think and the, the understanding is, is that the smaller one is not a water table. There may be water in it, but it is not, it's not this. And that it may drain, it will drain in time. That's the, that's the million-dollar question. How is it connected, is it connected to anything? Well, being so small, there may be, you know, water that's perched in it that isn't connected to anything whatsoever. You talk to the hydro geo folks, they'd say, this may be where the glacier stopped and it left these little slivers and there's water in it and you guys, you guys, you know, excavated to it and exposed it and it needs time to drain. So that's our current understanding of it. Now we are working with the PCA to reinforce that understanding of it and we'll talk a little bit later about the direction that we're getting from them. At the end of the day, what we don't want to do is, we do not want to have to put ourselves in a position to reevaluate all of this information that was previously done. We don't have groundwater monitoring because we have a liner. What we need to reinforce is that this is an engineering situation where we need to prove to them, so long as we can prove to them that the liner is intact, the fact that these little, those little stringers may exist, so be it. But if they don't, if they don't impact the liner, it's a non-issue. If we had a sand site and we did not have a liner, that would be a completely different understanding, a completely different interpretation.
Are we, are we drawing water off there right now? Is that what the pump is out there with the hose going to the truck?
So that is within the cell. So you are capturing what we refer to as leachate. So no, you are, you are just getting, that's, that's water that falls from the sky.
That's just groundwater.
Basically, you're pumping storm water at this point until you get more waste in there. I mean, this is, in terms of cell development, this is the worst of the worst because you, you don't have a lot of waste. You don't have anything to really absorb any moisture.
Just got a big bathtub out there right now.
Yeah. Demo waste being inert, it really doesn't, except though if this was MSW, it'd be a different story. It'd be a sponge. It'd like, it'd like the moisture. So, but no, that's, that's leachate. There is an underdrain system and that's, that was the collaboration with the PCA. We needed to, we needed some way in order to provide drain conditions beneath the sump so that we could, you know, finish the construction of the cell. Now the picture's pretty far away, but you can see there, the contractor is working on establishing the base grades on the floor of the landfill and there's an excavation here. This process to collaboratively work with PCA, not bashing the PCA, it didn't, it wasn't quick. So we're dealing with a contractor that wants to move and we're trying to get an understanding of, you know, what can we do to alleviate this? And this was, this was the product of that. So it's very, very similar to our leachate collection system in that it's a rock, it's a pipe, it's a drain that makes its way over to the south side of the cell and we pump it out. City staff is currently, you know, they've secured a pump. They go out there and pump it from time to time and record what the levels are and how much they think they pumped out of it. This process allowed us to proceed with the construction effort. We were able to continue with placement of clay liner and establish the sump. These systems, if you're wondering, they, they do exist. This is not something that's specifically unique to Fergus Falls. They're underdrained, you know, at other facilities. I wouldn't say they're common, but they do exist. So back to the, back to the PCA, this was a letter that we received from them and recall back to that permit. We chose to do a liner. We did not do groundwater monitoring. The, we're starting to ask the question, the PCA's starting to ask the question about additional evaluation of the groundwater conditions. Is this substantially different than what we had anticipated? We never said to them that we wouldn't come across water. This being a glacial environment and, you know, subgrade correction, we knew we may get some areas that would be questionable and they may drain water. At the end of the day, you know, hydro geologists, whether it's the PCA or our own, no one can answer that question, how long will it take for something to drain? Nobody knows. We do, we don't have, nobody has that expertise. The science isn't there. You could probably put a whole bunch more borings on there and get a closer answer, but with what the window into the world that we have and the state of the technology, no one knows that it'll drain. So we're starting to talk about groundwater conditions and elevations and this is where we've, I won't say we've diverged, but this is where we have a differing opinion that we feel this is more of an engineering application. If we can prove to you that the liner's intact, we do not want to go back and reevaluate the information that was done in 2008. We may need to supplement it with some information to give you a window into the world that the water isn't in contact with the liner, but we don't want to redo the entire hydro geologic evaluation of the facility. Some things did go well. You can see here that we placed a tank. That's the tank where the truck and the tanker is placed. It's a fairly deep tank. You have a submersible pump that's in this photo right here that's out of it. That installation went very well. You have a dual-contained collection line from the sump that makes its way here. It's by drain. No issues. Went well. You can see they're fusing some pipe here and here we're installing some storm pipe.
What is that, what is that tank? What's the...
This guy here is a leachate collection tank.
So that's, and then it gets pumped out of there?
Yep. So you're pumping out of, out of the, out of your cell. Everything, every drop of rain that falls in there will eventually get pumped to this tank. As part of the permit and, you know, that understanding of leachate and how we manage with it, we initially put in that there would be a collection line that would go all the way down around the facility. I don't know if I want to scroll back to the first slide, but, and end up at the ash facility, which currently has a loadout.
So we got a gravity drain.
There is, there was enough, at great cost. There was, you know, that's probably about a $300,000 affair, but it involves no trucks. It's gravity. There is no loadout. So on the permit, we put both. We don't know. You know, the city has to evaluate, you know, rates and costs and all of that. So we put both in. In terms of construction, you know, we're a few years later here, it was decided to go with an actual loadout while you guys evaluate the process if you want to do that drain line or not. Right now, I mean, I'm glad to hear that the rates are reasonable, the pumping rates. You know, it's a few trucks a week. Right now, that's going to be the worst of the worst. As eventually you get more waste in there, the volume should decrease. We're into June, making grade on liner. This is looking, this is looking really good. So we've made our way through the underdrain. We've, we've contended with water. Back to Bart's subgrade correction. We initially said we'd do 25% under the entire, over the entire baseline, including the side slopes. With the water that we found and some of the issues with, you know, getting compaction, we just, that's over the blue box or the blue deal. It more or less covered the entire base. And despite any question on the baseline, the entire bottom of the cell was subgrade corrected. We didn't want to deal with piecemeal this and explaining it to the PCA. There was enough hardship with making density that, so the entire base has a two-foot liner. You have a very robust liner section beneath your CND landfill. You have a very robust liner section beneath your CND landfill.
So, just so you know why we're putting water there, it's just for the compactive effort. You're thinking, we've got water, why are we adding water? Well, when you're, when you're laying the clay, you do have to have a certain moisture content to get the densities and, and the permeabilities, so...
In terms of the material that you have on site, this is just, it's, it's a fascinating site in that there is sand, that is beautiful sand. It was, it's good enough to be used as a drainage layer, and then on this side, that clay, we refer to as a permeability, and this is 10 to the minus nine centimeter per second. That is really good clay. There are sites across the state, there's a whole bunch of MSW sites that would love to have clay that is that well-compacted, that the grain size works out that you can get that level of compaction. So, you guys have great materials here. Other, other components of the site, on the left-hand side, we installed that sand drainage layer over the entire baseline. That's the, that's to provide a buffer for waste. You're taking demo materials which are full of, you know, slender, long, pokey things. So, this is to provide that buffer area, so we're not providing a hole through the liner, and you're allowing it to drain. We developed a pond as part of the project. Right now, pond, we've gotten some rain here. It's well-vegetated. If you stand down by 94, we're down here by an overflow and look up, I, I'm, it's, honestly, it's beautiful. You wouldn't think you're actually at a landfill. Engineers, we actually didn't make it of a box, so there's some curved lines and it's actually really good for us. Loadout, this is where the tanker, truck sits, and that's the tank that we mentioned previously. So, that was more or less the summary of Phase 3A. We can move over now to, to Phase 1 and 2, which is our closure. This picture, this picture's quite dated. I would say this is 20, this is vintage 2013 about. But, we're working on putting a final cover over this. Right now, the final cover has been placed. Here's a profile that shows the extent of the waste placement and those, those base grades. You can see, I want to say this is 12, 13, 14, something like that, in that order, and this is the final cover that we will be, or did place. This is the final cover section. We did ask an allowance from the state, the understanding that, you know, both of these projects are, it was tight in order to come up with balancing the amount of volume that you had here and to bring Phase 3 online. We actually requested and was authorized to change this slope from a 5 to 1 to a 4 to 1 to give us some additional capacity. That bought us more time. We had a landfill fire. The landfill fire was, I think it first pronounced itself in, in January, so this is well before the construction effort. This letter right here is from the city to the MPCA identifying, basically just acknowledging what it is, and it starts the conversation on what it is they want you to do. In the end, the understanding was that the best method in order to deal with this was to smother the fire. There are, you know, facilities and folks, they'll look at excavating, they'll look at throwing water on it, and all of those operations, what's been found, especially with this type of waste, is that you're just, you're exacerbating it, you're adding more fuel to the fire. The best method is to just cover it, which is very, very fortunate in that we are working on a final cover project. You imagine you were halfway through the development of your facility and you're like, you gotta cover it. Okay, then what? You know, wait? Which you would have to do. You need to provide some documentation, some proof to the PCA that you have stopped the fire. So, the fire did come back as part of the initial, those initial operations. If you look at the dates here, our, our struggles with the underdrain and have an understanding of what to do over in Phase 3A, the contractor shifted over to the closure. So, again, because we're so lucky, this is probably the second day of working on this over here and the, and the fire came back. So, we have pronounced, you know, smoke here. We coordinated with the PCA and more or less continued operations. We'll discuss it a couple of slides later about what, what that process, you know, needs to be in order to provide some resolution to it. We're working on regrading and reestablishing the bait, the, the final cover grades here. Again, you have lots of material on site and it was pulled from the stockpile just adjacent to it. So, I guess to that end, you guys are dirt-rich. There are a lot of facilities that don't have a lot of dirt. You guys have more dirt than you know what to do with. So, in terms of construction projects, at some point in the future, you're going to have to figure out a way to get rid of dirt, because you have more than you need. Again, continuing, final cover, they're prepping the surface here. This, like the Phase 3 expansion, also has a clay liner. It's of the same, built of the same, you know, standard, the same permeability. Again, you guys have great materials here on site. But our issues though with that was, we have to test it. There is rigorous testing that we need to provide in order to certify to the state that we built a liner and it was built to the plans and specs that we identified in our permit. To the hardships of this project, there was 22 CQA tests, construction quality assurance. We're checking that the contractor did it. They have their own tests that they need to provide. They do their own check. When they say it's good, they hand it over to us. So, to give you an understanding of the hardships on the process, project, there's 22 tests that require. We went in and we tested that initial, they, they hand it over, you go, here you go, test it. Every one of them failed, all of them. We'd expected that we'd see some failures by the landfill fire. You know, you're, the fire is contributing to some differential settlement. You may have trouble getting compaction in that area, but the fact that we failed all of them was, I'd say, it kind of unprecedented, you know, the, like you're perfect, I think it's good. We came back and they reworked it and, you know, re-moisture-conditioned it and got density and we failed half of them. It wasn't until the third time and that we were able to get density over all of the cell, so... We're in later June here, and we're continuing with the, the cover project. We're again placing a sand drainage layer, and then there's a cover that goes over that. We call it the veggie layer and a topsoil. It's just a, it's a rooting layer so that vegetation that we have on the cover doesn't make its way into the liner. It has sufficient area to grow. We specked out plants that are not deep-rooted. I mean, the worst thing they have is to place trees on your liner and they, roots are amazing. You know, if you guys, in your yard, they'll find amazing places to grow, so, and one of them is in the liner. And finally, replacing topsoil and seeding. You know, Bart and I were just out there before this meeting, and it's looking really well, the final cover section, how it's vegetated, it's, it's taken real well, so...
And the one thing to note is, as far as the area where the fire was, there's no stress vegetation right now. There's no differential settlement occurring in that area right now. Dennis, can you have a copy of the probe that you brought up?
Yeah, thank you. Right there. Yeah, so, you know, a landfill fire is not common. There are, they do happen, but typically it's maybe through operations, it's a facility that's operating and they can either go work in a different area or, you know, smother it and leave it for a while. This one is, you know, this is a closure. So, in order to put this to bed, you need to provide documentation to the state that it's out and we're done and we can walk away from this thing. Well, as it stands right now, we don't, we don't have that. And this is a little, I guess a little science fair project I put together. This is going to be a temperature probe that you guys will monitor. There's a, there is a riser that's currently within the landfill. It was identified in the first phase, it was to help, you know, drainage on the bottom of the cell so that operations wouldn't be in, you know, in the wet. We can monitor that for temperature. The PCA has requested that we put a boring in, in or near the location of where the landfill fire was observed and monitor the temperature there as well. That has not been done. It is, you know, to MPCA compliance, we've been in coordination with them that will need to be done this fall, and we'll be honest to make sure that that's completed.
We'll start monitoring in the...
We will start monitoring in the one stretch here, I guess. And in observing the cover, it is rather warm. I mean, just being out there a few hours back here, I, I don't think our fire has disappeared. I still think we have some, some issues.
So, part of that, we feel is, the outlet to that was open, and so, so what, the point of that riser structure is we, in the old landfill, under 184, they always would have to, if they got a big rainstorm, they'd be working on the water. And so, we wanted to make sure that they didn't, that they had a way to drain it. So, we put this, this drain into it and it went out to a, to a set basin where it could sit and, and then, we never got any rain. We never got any water in that set basin for the whole life of that Phase 1 and 2. But what it did, what we feel it did is, because you had an open tube, we had kind of a chimney, and we were pulling air in from that to feed the fire. So, since then, in fact, today they were out there and they put a cap on the riser structure, basically to seal it off, so we don't have, we're not feeding that anymore. So, that's where Troy is going to go and install the, the one probe that we left with him at the site and start monitoring the temperatures at the facility. I, I think you'll see that because we don't have that draft coming through there and that, that air feeding what's going on under there, I think it will help in, to suppress the, the fire, so...
So, of the, of the two items that are, you know, withstanding, we're, we are working now on our final change order to resolve those quantities with the contractor. The contractors actually only requested one payment on this project. There is no hurry to ask to get paid. Kind of frustrating, but this landfill fire is one item that we'll need to, need some resolution on, and then number two is, you know, working your way with the PCA to get an understanding of the groundwater issue in Phase 3A. So, you know, we're working and, and having conversation with them and trying to push them in that direction that this is, we can satisfy this with an engineering solution, and this is not, we're not going to redo the entire hydro geologic understanding. We provide assurances to you that the, that the liner is intact. Right now, that's being done on a temporary basis, and staff, Troy, has been out there and, and been pumping it. You know, depending on the, you know, the amount of labor and the intensity of that, that may possibly, may need to be turned into somewhat of a permanent system unless you want to be out there all the time, you know, doing it. It's very labor-intensive to be out there and pumping, so... Now, we got questions, so...
When you're speaking of leachate, when you first started, that, that leachate could be just the rainwater, right?
Correct. But there, the PCA's definition of leachate is anything that comes in contact with the waste. So, even though it's, it's, it probably has nothing in it, it's very dilute, because it actually touched the waste, came in contact with it, they consider it leachate. I tried to get them to agree that it was just contact water, and it wasn't, but they said, no, it's, it's leachate.
Since this is a, a new facility and there are not, there are not Class 1 facilities out there that collect this, there's no data available. As part of the permit, they had requested that we do leachate sampling of quality for the duration of the permit. They said, well, no, we're not doing your bidding. If you want to come out, you can come and test it. The outcome of that is we'll test it for three years and then stop, regardless of what it is. But given the waste, given where you're at in your cell development, it will be very dilute.
So, how often do we have to test that?
Uh, you're on a, twice per year. So, there's a fall. It'll, it'll coincide with the groundwater monitoring that's done on the closed, your S184, so for the old MSW, the old ash, it's done at the same interval. So, there's not a second mo, it's just grabbing two more samples. Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Bart. Any other questions? Yeah? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.